I'd like to call this meeting in the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge led by Mrs. Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not divided up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item E, adoption and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those A's.
All right.
Item F, presentations. Student representatives will make the presentation of the Student of the Month awards to two students from each secondary school and the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District for the month of December. And how this works is, normally I go up there and stand there, but I'm not today because I have a bad ankle, so Mike's gonna hand out the awards for me. And we call the representatives from each of the junior highs and high schools, and then they introduce individually the student of the month, and the student comes forward, we hear all about their amazing deeds while they look into the camera, so that the viewers at home can see them. And then when they are, you know, finished, they'll return to their seat and we'll also acknowledge their family that supports them, because we really feel like the family is a big part of their success as well. So, having said that, if we could have the student representatives from Kennelworth Junior High come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Monique and I'm in leadership at Kennelworth. Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce the September Student of the Month, Anna Petralia.
Okay.
Anna is an exceptional student who has shined while at Kennelworth. Not only does she achieve 4.0, but she has also earned several A pluses. Anna's teachers are continuously impressed by Anna academically and personally. They say that she possesses the maturity and confidence not often seen in a junior high student. Her problem-solving and critical thinking skills when working in a group environment are outstanding. They say that Anna is an independent learner who takes it upon herself to accomplish tasks, and she rarely gets stumped when faced with a challenge. Teachers also say that Anna is a talented student who appears to enjoy her studies in school because she actively participates in class discussions, and her work is well-organized and thoughtful. Anna excels in all of her classes, and it is obvious that she understands complicated concepts and is willing to share her ideas with others. Throughout Kennelworth, Anna is seen as a role model for other students and a pleasure to have in class. Anna is a very well-rounded individual. In addition to being highly academic, Anna is also very creative and athletic. Her favorite class is photography because she enjoys working on projects in the darkroom. Her photography teacher says that she possesses a strong eye for photography and art. Her photography teacher is also impressed by Anna's thoughtfulness and curiosity. Outside of school, she expresses her artistic side through dance and music. She recently returned to her passion of ballet. For five years, she has been practicing piano. Anna is also a talented athlete. For four years, she's been playing lacrosse. In her spare time, she enjoys reading fantasy and fiction novels. Anna's peers also recognize her intelligence and imagination. She's often highly sought as a member in group projects because of her creativity and ability to keep a group on task and focused. Peers also find her to be kind and compassionate to others. Anna's family is also very proud of all of her accomplishments. After high school, Anna plans to go to college somewhere close to home. She's considering pursuing a career in photography. It is obvious to everyone at Kennelworth that Anna has a very bright future in front of her. If she continues to approach life with the same confidence and maturity and resourcefulness, she's bound to excel. Congratulations, Anna.
Anna, you can go ahead back and have Anna's family rise and be acknowledged for their support.
Hi, I'm Maureen and I'm also in leadership, and I go to Kennelworth. Kennelworth Junior High School has pleased to introduce our other December Student of the Month, Mahir Bakhta. Teachers have taken notice that Mahir is an outstanding role model for his fellow students. He is committed to his academics and he has worked hard both years to achieve excellent grades. Mahir's teachers describe him as polite, motivated, hard-working, and a pleasure to have in their class. They also say that he is a conscientious student who takes pride in doing his work well. Teachers can tell that he puts a sincere effort into all of his assignments because his work is accurate, well-organized, and complete. He participates in class by frequently offering his ideas in class discussions and during team work time. Teachers have also been impressed with Mahir's leadership skills. A valued member of Kennelworth's leadership class, his leadership teacher says he is always reliable, on task, and dedicated to his work. His PE teacher also remarks that he displays quality leadership skills in physical education because he performs at a high level on a daily basis, and that his work, both inside and outside of class, is always impeccable. Mahir enjoys participating in school and all of the activities it offers. PE is his favorite class because he enjoys his teacher and he appreciates that the class includes everyone, so no one is left out. Mahir also enjoys his history class because his teacher has a good sense of humor. Mahir is also active in school by participating in leadership class and the Kennelworth Track Team. His running has greatly improved, and last year he beat his personal best during a PE run. Mahir also stays busy outside of school. Throughout elementary school, Mahir practiced in martial arts such as judo and taekwondo. In his spare time, he enjoys riding his bike, hanging out with friends, and reading fantasy and mythology novels. Mahir's family takes great pride in all of his accomplishments. Mahir has impressive plans for his future. He plans to attend college at a major university such as University of Pennsylvania, UCLA, or UC Berkeley. Eventually, he would like to pursue a career in medical science. We here at Kennelworth are confident that he and Mahir achieve his dreams because of his dedication, motivation, and leadership skills. Congratulations, Mahir.
And for his family, if you would rise and be acknowledged. And now representative from Pedaluma Junior High.
I'm Todd Pearson, and I'm at PJHS Leadership. And Nicholas Sereno has been chosen as the December Student of the Month at Pedaluma Junior High School.
Nicholas?
A bright, unique, and talented individual, Nicholas Sereno has been chosen as the December Student of the Month for Pedaluma Junior High School. Teachers state Nick is a pleasure to have in class. He works with quiet efficiency, is artistic, kind, and polite. Nick exhibits extreme effort and is a good role model for his fellow students. A well-rounded student, Nick is passionate about interests he has outside of school. He is currently working his way through the Boy Scouts ranks and is close to becoming an Eagle Scout. Nick is a dedicated musician, spending as much time as he can improving his talent in playing lead guitar in a rock band named Universal Distortion. He is also a deep thinker concerned that the thought and imagination are being lost in the age of technology, and wants to find a way to restore and maintain meaningful, creative, and intellectual conversations. He loves studying art and enjoys drawing robots and science fiction images. Nick wants to integrate his numerous interests by creatively pursuing the intersection of art, music, and stories to discover and expression that merges them together. Nick is very gifted and will certainly succeed in his pursuits. Nick's parents state, "We are very blessed to call Nick our son. From a very young age, we noticed something special about Nick. He was also a very happy child, but also seemed to be much wiser than his actual age. He gives everything his all, from schoolwork to his art, to his music, to becoming an Eagle Scout. He even drew his hair out from second to sixth grade, so he can donate it to locks of love. He is a great big brother to all of his, and all of his little, and all of his 11-year-old friends look up to him. We are so proud of Nick and look forward to watching him accomplish any and all of his goals." Congratulations, Nicholas Sereno.
And we'd like to acknowledge Nick's family.
I'm Edna Yashar, and I'm the Officer-at-Large at Pedaluma Junior High. Alyssa Clark has been chosen as Student of the Month for December at Pedaluma Junior High School. A bright shining star, Alyssa Clark has been chosen as the Student of the Month for December at Pedaluma Junior High School. Alyssa is a smart 4.0 student who is creative with a good sense of humor. She is enrolled in Advanced English and Geometry, and is a co-editor of the yearbook. Alyssa is well-respected and loved by her peers and teachers alike. She is polite, respectful, kind, friendly, and considerate. Alyssa will go out of her way to help anyone and does it with an upbeat cheerful attitude. In elementary school, she won the citizenship award, the Native Sons of Golden West, and Trey Atkins essay contest. As a positive influential leader and role model, Alyssa works tirelessly to accomplish her goals, setting a good example for those around her. True to her spirit, Alyssa's future goals include attending medical school, to become a doctor, to help patients diagnosed with cancer. Outside of school, Alyssa keeps herself busy by playing year-round competitive soccer for the Pedaluma Ballistic Traveling Team. Alyssa also takes piano lessons and has been playing since she was four years old. She enjoys reading, collecting coins, playing with her dog, helping her mom, camping with her family, and hanging out with friends. Alyssa's parents state, "Alyssa is an amazing girl. She is very conscientious and applies herself to whatever it is that she is doing, whether it be school, sports, or helping her family. We are so proud of her and all that she has achieved." Congratulations, Alyssa Clark.
And now a representative from Casa Grande High School.
Hi, I'm Luvie Lemon, ASP President.
And I'm Nicolette Ratto, Commissioner of Activities. And one of our Students of the Month is Greg Dibs.
Gregory Dibs is 4.1 for GPA, ranks in seventh in his graduating class. He has been a member of the Casa Grande Honor Society, the California Scholarship Federation, and the National Honor Society throughout his high school career. He is an Eagle Scout in Boy Scout Troop Seven. For his Eagle project, he installed a drip irrigation system for 26 redwood trees at Sonoma County Wildlife Rescue. He's heading into his third season playing Casa Grande Lacrosse and is co-president of the Ultimate Frisbee Club. Greg has played piano for eight years, trombone for seven, and is the first chair trombone player on the Casa's varsity jazz band and symphonic band. He has also played in the Sonoma County and Northern California Honors Band. He is passionate about music and science and plans to study a branch of bioengineering in college.
And Greg's family, if you could just give them a hand.
Our next Student of the Month for December is Sierra Downey. Sierra Downey is a dedicated student, volunteer, and above all, learner. While maintaining her 4.2 GPA is important, Sierra finds intrinsic motivation in all aspects of high school. In her nearly four years at Casa Grande, she has been risen to become president of Interact, a community service club that works internationally as well as locally. This year, she initiated a school-wide polio awareness campaign, raising $170 in less than a week. Sierra enjoys participating in the music program and sits as first flute in Casa's symphonic band. Her passion for learning pushed her to find more academic outlets. As a result, she is currently studying imperialism and colonialism as captain of this year's academic to Cofelon team. When relieved of school duties, you could find Sierra happily hiking the high country of Yosemite, kayaking across Emerald Bay, or camping in Death Valley. Her most fascinating class is the real world with a teacher experience. Congratulations.
Okay, representative from Pedaluma High. I thought I saw her. There she is.
My name is Hannah Lacanow, and I'm the representative for Pedaluma High School. And our first Student of the Month is Francesca Honey. Francesca Honey is a motivated student who has challenged herself in various AP and honors classes throughout her four years at high school. She particularly enjoys English literature, as she has always been an avid reader. Francesca has managed to keep a cumulative GPA 4.2 while, one, excuse me, while pushing herself to succeed in both school and sports. Francesca has been captain of both cross-country and track running year-round, as well as earning a four-year varsity athlete for both sports. Outside of school, she has volunteered at the Sonoma County Library as well as Pedaluma Bounty. She also volunteered at West Side Realize. Francesca plans to attend a four-year university, and due to her love of traveling, hopes to take a year abroad during college. Congratulations, Francesca.
And our second Student of the Month is Kyle Craft, but I don't see him here. Kyle, we can save it for next month. If he's not here.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have two more presentations, and then after those two presentations, we will take a short recess, so that those of you who might have homework or something can move along, but we still have two more. Our next is item two, students, Jessica Mather? Is that, no, I will let their, let's see. Oh, we have representatives from Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. I'll let you introduce them. How's that? Mrs. Gay.
Good evening. I'm not going to take any time tonight. I'm just going to introduce, first of all, our student advisor to the student council, Ms. Kinder.
Hi. This is my first, my first year as the student council advisor, and I've got the best of both worlds, working in the, at Mary Collins. I get to work with kindergarten, first graders all day, and I get to work with these great young people, like every lunch and after school, and Jessica's my TA, so we can do double duty. So I just want to introduce Jessica and let her tell you everything that's going on at Mary Collins. Wonderful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Mather, the student council president at Mary Collins School. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing at Mary Collins and in the student council, and what we have planned for the rest of the year. We have created several committees this year to start off on some things that are new to this school, and also some things that are the same. One of the first needs that has come to our attention was the Giving Tree. Myself and few others are involved in this committee. We have been making the ornaments of the tree that's located in our school office. The whole point of the Giving Tree is to help celebrate the holidays with families who need some extra support this time of year. Coming up for the next task, we'll be making posters to get more attention focused on this Giving Tree. This year, we have 12 of our school families through the holidays to help. Another area of need is cots in Pedaluma Kitchen. We've decided to revolve our support around the Hundred Day of School in mid-January. The idea is that we are going to collect 100 items per class, and when reached, we, as a school, will donate the items to cots in Pedaluma Kitchen. As a council, we have also identified a campus need. Our track is in need of major repair. It has gotten soap pads in the past year that is becoming unsafe, and now students have to run on the grass. So one of our ideas is Nike grind. The idea is to take used shoes with rubber soles and grind them up with other recycled materials, which will become the whole track. This program sounded like something that was up our school's alley of recycling and reusing. We are still in the process of getting started and finding an installer. The first step before anything would be start collecting shoes from families and members of the community. We know it will not be cheap, but this is where fundraising is involved. For fundraisers, we have many ideas. However, the executive board has chosen two that we think will be the best. The first one is an art sale. Students can donate art that will be purchased by anyone that wants to be involved. That's basically it. This committee has just begun getting the details worked out. The second one is a kids' cherry jubilee. Many times throughout this year, the school throws a fundraiser just for parents or adults. But this time, around we changed it to be just for a kid at school, so they can get a feel of the whole idea. The feeling is that kids aren't getting involved and are a little jealous. So the idea is to have an event for kids that won't be too expensive or too discriminating. And we will have an auction and even a raffle, but all at the same time, it won't be too expensive and lots of fun. The committee has also just begun getting the process of getting started, but we'll still be on the way of hosting this event. What has been going on at our school of Mary Collins are a lot of things. The K through three classes had a museum-on-the-go experience recently with support of the PTA. It went very well. Lots of kids learned things about matter and had loads of fun. Kindergarten and first graders are studying wool and busy getting crafting for holiday projects. Kindergarten and first graders are studying, I'm sorry, the, they are also getting ready for their winter concert, which will be coming next week and should be adorable. Then the second and third graders are working on a storyteller unit and are having guests to come share the wonderful art or storytelling. They are recently mentioned in a Sonoma State blog about their work on the marine mammal center storyline. Coming up in the middle school grades, fourth and fifth graders are also working on holiday crafts. They just mentioned the book Island of the Blue Dolphins and are presenting projects relating to the book. These projects include sculptures, essays, and some originally composed monologues, and even a song written about the main character. The sixth graders are learning to blog and are involved in the whole class literary circle about the book Hatchet. Then finally, seventh and eighth graders are learning about strong essays and persuasive essays. They are also involved in a thing called the reading challenge, where they have to learn to explore different genres in both, exercise in both longer and shorter texts. Recent news, there has been a group in seventh and eighth grade that are organizing a protest in response to budget cuts for education, and are upset with the fact that pieces of their future education have been taken from them. The hope is to get a lot of attention drawn to this issue, and other schools joining them in the movement for their future education. I am a supporter of this, however, I am not one of those organizers. So I don't know a whole lot, and it's also a new thing just about to take off. I am sure you will hear more about it as it moves towards the actual event. That's basically it. If you have any questions, feel free to ask myself, Ms. Hertzberg, or Ms. McGee. Thank you.
And then we have two other student reports from our two junior high schools. How about the representative from Pedaluma Junior?
Okay. Our girls' basketball season finished up with solid performances by both teams, and the girls' volleyball teams are now playing. Our boys' basketball final watchers were just confirmed last week, and they are preparing for league games. The joint use project of our ball and track fields are progressing on time, and construction should be completely done by the end of this week. The prefabricated bathrooms were bought, were brought in on Monday, and the grass sod was set in place last week, making a dramatic difference in the appearance. We will have to keep off the grass for a couple of months to let it establish the root system, but we will be able to use the all-weather track that is made up of decomposed granite as soon, as soon as it is handed over to us. Our sixth grade parent night for next year's seventh graders is planned for the week we return from our winter break, and our preliminary projections for enrollment indicate a possible growth of 50 to 70 new students. We will begin our scheduling meeting, we will begin our scheduling meeting and faculty meetings to begin in January. We have been informed that PJHS won four of the six categories for the local Elks Club essay contest entitled, "I Choose Not to Use Drugs." The winners will be announced by representative of the Elks Club at January Monday School Wide Assembly. Our site council has tentatively approved funding for after-school English and math classes for students who need to make up credits to participate in promotion activities. This is in addition to our after-school tutorial offered in the library by parent volunteers. Our sixth grade academy went to Nano Road Water Treatment Plant and attended a tour of the facility, learning how to water, how the wastewater is treated and released into the wetlands. We learned that the majority of recycling fertilizer actually takes place in Pedaluma along Lakeville Highway. They also attend a performance of The Nutcracker performed by the Pedaluma Valley Company at Person Theater at Sonoma State University. Our associate, our associated student body purchased a free standing student store building that is located in the courtyard of the multipurpose room, aptly named The Coop. It is open for business two days a week for school spirit and academic supplies. Our annual canned food drive has begun for our school community in need for extra support. Food baskets will be distributed on Friday, December 23rd by our PTSA volunteers. The PTSA supplies frozen turkeys, and the community does the rest. Our math department attended the annual Asilomar Math Conference in Pacific Grove last weekend and learned about the new, the new national math standards and the latest in teaching strategies. Members reported out at our last facility meeting. We are continuing to upgrade our school, our school-wide technology with the purchase of five voice amplification systems and additional interactive smart boards for classrooms. This is due in part to the influence of the sixth grade academy teachers who have shared their use and acceptance of iPads and smart boards. We are all looking forward to finishing off this semester with our annual music concerts and student dance this Friday.
Thank you. And our Kennelworth representatives.
Hi, my name is Maureen.
And I'm Monique Gels. We're from Kennelworth Junior High School, and we're in the, in Kennelworth's, in Kennelworth's leadership class. Recently, our woodshop class made toys to donate to the well-known charity Toys for Tots. 175 toys were made, wrapped, and given to the organization just last week.
During the month of November, students in several English classes participated in the National Novel Writing Month with a Nano Rhino competition online. 90 students completed their 10,000-word essay novels.
Just last week, we had a fire drill during third period, and we also had an intruder drill the week before. Friday, the ninth, was Kennelworth's winter dance. Many students came and celebrated the holiday cheer.
Boys' basketball tracks were held November 30th through, through December 2nd, and the teams were announced a couple of weeks ago. Both today and yesterday, our guest speaker, Mr. Sharkey, gave us a presentation advising morning and informing us about the dangers of alcohol and drugs. A couple weeks ago, during our PE period, Nurse Thomas came in, and she too talked about the risks of drinking and alcohol.
Just a few weeks.
Drinking and drugs, sorry.
Just a few weeks ago, Kennelworth held a dine and donate at Mary's Pizza Shack. We helped raise a lot of money for our school. Throughout the weeks, the volleyball team has played many games, and they strive to get better for their upcoming games.
Coming this Friday, we have a lunchtime activity called Find the Jelly Beans. Students get to participate in sticking their face into a pan of whipped cream to find the hidden jelly bean. On the last day before winter break, Kennelworth is having pajama day.
Coming up next week, we have, we have finals from December 20th through the 22nd, and winter break will start on December 23rd, and will go until January 8th. Thank you. Thank you.
We have one more presentation, but we always are entertained by and impressed by our students, whether it's the Student of the Months that are just so amazing, or the reports that they bring to us from their sites. Our next presentation, I'll have Mr. Everett come up and introduce.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce California Schools Employees Association President Norah Cruz-Maggi, who will present an award to honor the CSCA members of the party.
For anybody who doesn't know, classified employees are all of the people who aren't the teachers, the secretaries, the custodians, the instructional assistants, bus drivers, the food service people.
the secretaries, the custodians, the instructional assistants, bus drivers, the food service people. So we'd like to do a member of the quarter, and this is our second one this year. It's our second Vicki, by the way, so I don't know. There's a corner on Vicki this year, if I'm seeing it. Vicki McCormick is our member of the quarter. Vicki McCormick started with the district on 9/30/2002 as a campus supervisor at Petaluma High School. A year and a half later, she became an instructional assistant in special education at Petaluma High School. A year and a... I'm sorry. Then, three years after that, she became an instructional assistant with special education in workability, also at Petaluma High School. Three and a half years after that, 7/1/2010, she applied for and received an upgrade and became the instructional assistant project workability at both CASA and Petaluma High School. Now, I'd like to read from her nomination form. Vicki is the kindest, most positive person I have worked with. She has a wonderful way of working with our RSP students in preparing them for the workforce and helping them to get a job, then following up with them above and beyond her job. She genuinely cares how they are doing in all aspects of their life. In addition, Vicki is now our site rep and is committed to keeping us informed. Thank you, Vicki. So please help me congratulate Vicki as CSEA's second member of the quarter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It takes everybody in the district to do what needs to be done to help the students succeed, as you've heard earlier this evening. So thank you. Okay. Now, I will take a very short recess so that those who need to leave can leave, but you are all welcome to stay. We have several more presentations to go through. I'd like to reconvene this meeting. Thank you. All right. We have our tour, our presentation. Who wants to introduce the speakers?
Actually, I'll just introduce Deb and let her introduce the speakers this evening, if you would like.
Great. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Deb Fitch, and I teach math and entrepreneurship at Petaluma High School. So my colleagues and I are here to present a plan to you about school reform, and I know that you have received some information in your board packet. So our hope is that after you read that information and hear our presentation, that you'll give us a thumbs up to continue with our plan. Okay, so, you know, we know that there are many ways to design a school, and particularly a high school. And we are very proud of what we do at Petaluma High. As you know, we have really a high graduation rate, an excellent core program, a standard-based curriculum, and we are already looking at the common core standards that are coming down the road. And so took that into account. We have a superior advanced placement program and a very solid and vital career tech education program, as you know, one that has survived many ups and downs. And of course, we're particularly proud of our API score last year of 816. That's the second highest in Sonoma County. So we're certainly proud of that, and we also know that we can make improvements. And we're really committed to meeting the needs of every student at Petaluma High School. And we wanted to show a picture of a potential student. This is not a current student at Petaluma High, a potential student. Because we kind of don't know who she is. And our plan, we wanted to make sure that our plan took into account that we want to find out. We want to make sure that we know who she is and what her desires are, what her needs are. She could be any student at Petaluma High. She could be interested in taking all of our advanced placement classes and interested in going on to a four-year university directly from the high school. She could be interested in our museum classes, our strong ag programs, music, you know, a myriad of classes. And so we kept her in mind as we designed our plan. And we call her Andrea because we wanted to put a name to a face. You know, one of the hallmarks at Petaluma High School is that we have so many teachers who are former students. And they remember walking into an English class, doing a science lab, maybe marching in the band, or playing on Durst Field. We also have many of our teachers who have students, either current or former, and some of you at Petaluma High. And again, we wanted to emphasize that we want to make sure that we know each of them, as well as someone like Andrea. So let me give you a little bit of history. Petaluma High started in 1873. I guess I need to go fast forward and go to 2004, when the Petaluma City Schools entered into a smaller learning community's grant. And I know that you're aware of this, but just to remind you that we implemented then teams in the ninth and 10th grade and clusters in the 11th and 12th grade. And you know, much of that was really helpful, and students got a lot out of that. But there were some things that didn't work for students in particular. And so in 2007, we made the decision to opt out of that grant, although we continued with the structure of teams and clusters. And then, last March, we decided that we wanted to take a look at what works well at Petaluma High and what we could improve. And so that's where C3 was born. The three Cs that we talk about were coherence, collaboration, and connection. And we divided into teams. And when I say "we," I mean the entire faculty, and we got input from staff members, from students. So we really tried to get input from all of our stakeholders. And we met over the spring and into the summer, and of course, this fall. And divided basically into four key areas. And so that's what we're going to present to you tonight. So in a moment, Teri Schmidt, our lead counselor, will present to you our plans for teacher collaboration so that we can ensure academic performance. Then Chris Jones, who teaches drafting and computer-aided design, is going to talk about our ideas for pathways, some of which, of course, have been at Petaluma High, how we want to make sure that that is part of our process to make sure that students see the connection between school and career. Peggy Wiley, our English department chair, will lead us then into something that we call future vision, helping students to understand what they're doing at school and in those pathways and their future. And then Bob Holland, our science teacher, will discuss and present our ideas for making sure that kids feel connected, the whole personalization piece. So I'd like to now present to you Teri Schmidt, and she's going to talk about academic performance.
Thank you, Deb. Good evening, everyone. So we do believe that our school should reflect the goals of our school board. Throughout the C3 process, we remain cognizant of these goals while considering what we currently practice and what we believe should be added or refined. These goals are addressed in our C3 plan in multiple ways. So starting with academic performance of our students, where we focused on the highlighted goals that you see on the wall there. At Petaluma High School, we develop a four-year plan for each of our students. Research shows that developing these individual plans leads to student success. Counselors work with all freshmen to develop their four-year plan. Through the process, a student like our Andrea might decide that she's going to follow our PHS pathway for engineering because that could combine her interests in science and computers. One of the keys to high student performance is clear expectation on behalf of the teachers. So to address this scheduled PLC time during 2012-13, we'll be dedicated to GLASS teams, grade-level assistance for student success. GLASS teams are cross-curricular and need to discuss issues concerning their grade level of students. Content and discussion will be based on data and could include things like the academic performance of 10th graders, tutorial usage, assignment allocation. So they work together. You don't have a huge biology test the same day your history project is due. Common assessments, homework completion rates, et cetera. These teams can also focus on common core standards and the necessity to integrate our common curricular elements. As we work to base our decisions on student performance, we're also providing staff access to student data through Ares and Edusoc. And these tools will be able to inform the decisions and discussions in our GLASS teams. One example of a GLASS idea that came out of a sophomore team this year was the Petaluma High Mail Ground. Now, it's used school-wide to alert parents of their child's excellence and excellent performance in some area of school life. So they might get a card and a mail ground that says, "Jessica aced the biology test today. Well done." We also wanted to look at at-risk students and focusing on at-risk sophomores. In 2010-11, Petaluma High School began the implementation of a California Partnership Academy, specifically the Media and Design Arts Academy. It's funded by the... Or the partnership academies are funded by the state, and they've really proven very successful since the '80s when they were first introduced. Students who struggle during the freshman year and are identified as at-risk are encouraged to enter the academy in their sophomore year. The structure links three core classes with a CTE class, and in our case, it's a film class. New research shows that a 95% graduation rate for students in these academies, which is significantly higher than, you know, for most students in California. We're also discussing the linking of classes. As you'll soon hear in our pathway discussion, many of our students should experience hands-on classes alongside theoretical. So our links program, let's include non-core kinds of classes, connects a physics student with an industrial tech course, for example, or a drafting course with a construction tech class. Other examples might include economics with entrepreneurship, government with legal studies, world history with art, too. We have lots of ideas and examples at our campus. A key component to student success is the Petaluma High School library. Research in over 20 states is showing a correlation between a strong school library and student achievement. And the PHS library team brings a learning commons that students can use during the school day and have 24/7 access through our website at phslibrary.org. The PHS library provides resources, instruction, and activities to ensure that students are effective users and creators of information and ideas. Working in collaboration with classroom colleagues, the teacher librarian provides instruction and the skills necessary to meet 21st century goals as outlined in the California Model School Library and Common Core Standards.
Thanks, Teri.
So this first piece, of course, is really about teacher collaboration and looking at students and student performance. And then making sure that students are understanding, you know, what's going on and how what they're doing at school links to life outside of school. And so that gets us to the next piece, and Chris Jones is going to talk about pathways and helping students to make that connection between school and career.
Thanks, Deb. Good evening. As previously mentioned at the introduction of our program, one of the items that was very important during our C3 collaboration was to focus on what Petaluma High School does very well, noting before you are the board goals that our C3 team focused on in particular. Clearly, through the numerous awards and outstanding track record, one of the things that we do well at Petaluma High School is provide students multiple opportunities in our elective programs. While focusing on the positive aspects of our school, our staff also agreed that students who choose a clear and defined focus are more likely to succeed academically. And unquestionably, the research provided by the California Department of Education supports this observation. The Academy of Mind Petaluma High School has formalized a pathway structure that centers around the California Department of Education CTE framework and state standards. The California Department of Education has identified through its own research and evaluation 15 separate industry sectors with a variety of pathways to assist students in discovering and focusing on possible career choices. Through the C3 collaboration, our team was able to recognize seven of these industry sectors and 22 of those pathways within existing Petaluma High School coursework. And what's important to note about each of these sectors and the pathways that exist within them is that in order to have a clear path for students, the course sequence must include an introduction, a concentration, and capstone class. This being an essential characteristic of all the pathways, our team is also aware of our strong AP student population and will provide clear objectives within those pathway structures to high-end post-secondary goals for those students. By identifying the three major components in each pathway, we can outline for every student a discernible path to continuing education and professional training opportunities. Charting this process for each pathway also allows us to build solid articulation agreements with local and state colleges. Although it's not required to graduate Petaluma High School, our goal is to provide each and every student the opportunity to choose a comprehensible, relevant, and defined pathway to success.
So, you know, Teri talked about the GLASS teams and assuring students' success, and Chris was just talking about pathways. And so we need to find a way to make sure that students can research and understand their interests. And so that gets us to Peggy Wiley, who's going to talk about future vision.
This subcommittee was originally called Career Visions, but it quickly became evident to us that it was much more than just careers. It was, you know, planning for their futures. And so we did change the name to Future Visions. As we went through this process, the planning process, of course, we considered the board goals, as you see. Each student is now open to a myriad of potential careers and post-secondary educational options. We support these conversations with our students by embedding the Future Visions discussions throughout each of the students' four years at Petaluma High School. Each student will receive a Future Citizens folder at the beginning of their freshman year, and each year's experience, both in and out of the classroom, covers these individuals as they make pathways through high school and beyond. The Future Visions subcommittee is working to develop a student activities bridge between the pathways and the personalization committees. Our main objective is for our students to understand the answer to the question, what school got to do with it? So to make those connections between why they do what they do in class and what it connects with in terms of their life. We've designed a grade-level 9 through 12 curriculum that will guide our students through the career exploration process and in addition to that, a self-exploration process as it's connected to like career and post-secondary education opportunities. If a student is considering a particular career or course of study, they should know how to access the information with regard to those subjects. And in addition to that, these very basic premises of career exploration, our students should have a solid foundation about job-seeking skills and also job-keeping skills. And so the Future Visions curriculum will address those issues as well. As I said before, the curriculum is divided into grade levels, and with each grade level, it will address the different developmental needs of each level. So thus, 9th grade is very different from 12th grade and so forth.
So having extensive pathways in the Future Vision is really not enough because we have to make sure that students are on board, that they feel connected, that there's this sense of personalization. So Bob Holland is going to... So Bob Holland is going to now talk about what our plans are for that area.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks for having us here today. In the packet before you, you'll find our plan for an advisory period. We've kind of labeled it ASK, Assistant Student Knowledge. It will be a period of time or schedule for students, just consistently meet with teacher advisors and other mentors. And there you see the goals we have with this program. This will give teachers, students of ASB leadership, clubs, and organizations a platform to connect and develop over a board with the whole student body. It will inform the school community about various support groups, activities, career information, and skill enhancements that are available to all. This program will be overseen by a select committee comprised of administrators, teachers, students, that will establish schedules and activities in accordance to our goals. We, the staff at PHS, also believe that connecting students via other existing programs increases the likelihood of successful high school experience, as indicated by research. And we've also just presently come across some research that indicates that a nice side benefit of a program such as this is these schools have found increase in their attendance. Through the Safe School Ambassador Program, students learn skills to intervene peer-to-peer on social issues. With T4, individual juniors and seniors, connect with incoming freshmen to assist in transition to high school. In ASB, students learn aspects of governance and leadership. They also invigorate our campus with rallies and spirit. CSF peer tutors provide support for struggling students and reinforces learned skills. Our athletic program consistently produces strong results on the field and court, but also in the classroom. Our gymnasium currently displays 51 pennants. 51 pennants awarded to the top three teams in the North Coast section for overall GPA. In fact, our current overall GPA for our fall team is 3.5 at this point. Our music program, both instrumental and vocal, continues to perform with wide acclaim. As many of our students are members of campus clubs or organizations such as Interact, Palhosa, Circle of Friends, FFA, FBLA, JSA, Skills USA, Trojan True, and many more. But it's not enough. If we could connect each and every student to a passion, a club, or an organization, we are far more likely to see success in the classroom, make school a place one wants to be at, and much, much more than just a place for reading, writing, and arithmetic. So let's talk about Andrea, that student that many schools have, that may be an at-risk student, maybe she's a loner, shy, the kind that sits in the hallway, writes poetry, and draws. What if we had a program such as the one we'd like to install? Can you imagine if in class, when a presentation is given, encouragement and elicitment, convening with others who share her same passion? Imagine what could blossom in a situation like that? Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Well, I think you can see that our focus is on the individual, that we don't want any student to be left behind. You probably recall the No Child Left Behind law. When that was first conceived, the idea behind it was very sound, that literally no child left behind, and that schools in the United States would leave no student behind. Whatever you may think of MCLB at this point, no one argues that each child is critical. Parents care about the schools and about education in general, but mostly, they care about their child at the school. Sometimes, the school system naturally moves towards caring for groups of students. We believe that our system can miss no one. So Pedaluma High School is dedicated to serving each student by providing the following: a system of pathways where each student has the option to choose a concentrated course of study that leads to certification; an advisory period where a group of students meets regularly with a specific staff member to personalize their high school experience and to assist them in seeking their future career and collegiate direction; an opportunity for teachers of each grade level to meet in class teams, to discuss curriculum, to align rubrics, to coordinate lessons, and to implement the Common Core standards as they come along; and a continued effort by counselors, teachers, and administration to connect each student to a non-academic element, be it a club, an ASB, a band, an athletic team, state school ambassadors, what have you. So we can't ignore the needs of any of our students, like Andrea that we discussed earlier. We have to create avenues for the children of our teachers, our cafeteria workers, our campus supervisors, our board members, our police officers, our own kids. In many ways, our school has been on a lost accreditation journey this year, a year early than we actually have to do it. We've established a sense of unity for our staff, students, and school that connect with the coming Common Core standards. Now, we need to continue to focus on the work in each classroom to ensure that each student is receiving the highest level of instruction in every class. We also need to refine the work done to this point, to get specific about pathway content and to work on articulation agreements to give teeth to our pathway certification. And we need to measure our success, discover our successes or failures, survey students and parents, develop a more robust instrument for measuring the progress of each student over time, and then to track them to make sure that they are succeeding. Finally, all of our, all of our staff at Pedaluma High and the community of PHS want to thank you for carrying us out tonight, and we appreciate your partnership and service of Pedaluma's kids. And we want to point to our slogan, which we believe speaks to our school and the unique purpose that we have gathered around this: A small school atmosphere, large school opportunities for our campus student.
Thanks.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
I'd just like to, as a Pedaluma High member, just to thank our committee here who has spent countless hours putting this presentation together for you. So, guys, publicly, we'd like to...
Do we have any questions?
Not really. I just want to compliment them on the presentation. It was incredible. It was so professional. I was thrilled, to be honest with you. A lot to digest, a lot to think about, but it was well done.
Have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
I want to compliment you, too, on inclusiveness, because I think it's so important to get these kids, get them at that age, and I love the counseling component of helping them and directing them, because they all have talents, they just sometimes, I think, need some direction and guidance to catch on, and we all know if you work at something you love, you really never work. So if we get those kids there, it's the same with their educational process, and I think you'll find yourselves engaging, a lot of kids who otherwise wouldn't be, so kudos.
Yeah, I'd actually just like to also compliment you on your own inclusiveness, because clearly you all have worked, and you've touched a lot of bases, and there's a lot of faces that I haven't seen here, and my understanding is that you had a wide outreach, and at Pedaluma High School, that's greatly appreciated, and it's been needed. So thank you for that. I do have a question, and that question would be, I didn't hear a lot about how you would use technology in this plan that you have presented. And I think as we sit here, and please get up if you, if you can address that, or if anybody here could, as we realize that it's common, it's working in some regard, and we need to embrace it, and I'm curious as to how you all interpret that.
Being a...
I mean, beyond the white war.
Yeah, yeah, no. Being a career tech education teacher, it's a great question, and the technology, as we all know, the budget plays a big part of that. That's, that's, that's a given. I've seen, being the new technology coordinator at Pedaluma High School, and being able to talk with the district, at the district level, in regards to technology, I think there's some great plans going on. We're already seeing the plans happen at the junior high level with their sixth-grade academy. I see things like that filtering in and filtering up. It's interesting that they have to filter up and not down, but we, in addition to that, seeing some really interesting changes happen at the district level. I can tell you, at Pedaluma High School, from a technology level, I'll talk about my own classroom, what I know to be true. We offer the latest and greatest software to students every single year. We purchase the Autodesk Design Academy, so that they are learning on the best software. We may not have the best hardware, but we work on that. We are on a, on a rolling program that, that our budget allows us to kind of roll in our business programs and my programs to allow us to upgrade hardware. I know for a fact that our metal shop is the best in Northern California, and you may even go as far as the state, and you may even go as far as some of the West Coast on some of the metal shop. And the hardware and technology that we see in that program is some of the top, top stuff that you see. So I think we have the vision, we have what it takes, we have, I know that we have teachers dedicated to make sure that our technology stays current for the students. That's a really important key. Finding the budget to be able to do that can be difficult, but I also know that we have dedicated teachers and people at the district level who are going to assist us with grants. I know Dan Sunya has grants that he has tapped into, and we're always looking for that opportunity. So that's our goal, that's our vision, is to make sure we're always current.
Talk about, if you can, just utilization of the technology that we have. I mean, going all the way down to things like email and standardized application across this school and the district. I mean, to me, this is an opportunity. Everybody's coming together, and everybody's working really well together, and maybe we can all start doing things the same way as well. Could you all cross that bridge, Mark, for email, Ares, Edusoc, those kinds of things?
It's a great question, even beyond technology, because we've talked about this, and Peggy, you know, you're talking about common agreements, is what I heard Peggy say at a, at a meeting for all of us, to say that whether you're in the English department, or the math department, or, you know, the manufacturing lab, whatever, is that we, as teachers, have agreements about what we're doing and how we're doing it with kids. And this is a great opportunity for us to come back to some of those and then get on with some of them. I know that some of that is, is around technology. So it's, you know, what you're talking about is, is a piece of something that is even broader and greater, and that's where the GLASS teams and the LINKS and the, you know, one of the professional learning community piece of all of this has been something that we are very charged about. So, so that, you know, addresses that. Also, I teach math, and in the math department, we're looking at even some of the, now, the textbooks that are eBooks and, and trying to look at that. One of our, our publishers that publishes our algebra and geometry textbooks has just let us know that they're going to be putting all of that on eBooks, and they're going to be like $35 apiece, which is less than their current textbooks. And we know that that's going on even in the colleges and universities. So we, as, as individual departments, are looking at that as well. And of course, especially at the, well, you know, kindergarten, too, but at the high school level, our kids are the ones who are teaching us, too. So we're really trying to tap into that, so.
I just want to add, we're also at the beginning stages of talking about some of this stuff. You know, in Peggy's group, the Future Vision, we envisioned initially as a paper folder that follows a student, but we also were talking about the digital side, so that a student leaves Pedaluma High School with a digital portfolio of his or her academic successes at Pedaluma High and is ready to bridge into the next stage. He has a resume, and she has a cover letter already written. They know what's going to happen next. They have a plan, and they have something which they carry with them, not physically, but the way we all carry things now. We carry them by storing them elsewhere, and we can access them whenever we need them.
Dan, Dan, yeah.
Dan Sunya, manufacturing technology. As many of you may know, I'm involved with an apprenticeship program, machinist apprenticeship program that the Pedaluma Adult School is, the LEA. And I can tell you with hundreds of contacts in, out in the industry in the North Bay area that employers are extremely concerned about the next generation of employees, and the skills, and the ability, and the talents, and it's high-tech skills. It covers...
Scary.
Yeah. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that. Our community is watching. They're calling me and other teachers about, hey, you've got a great entry-level machinist or woodworker, automotive mechanic, or ag student, or business student, or art student. So they're, they're seeing it, the community is seeing, I think, what we're doing, and we're hearing that. And we're listening, we're keeping our technology as current as possible. You know, Chris may not have the hardware, but well, I should, he'll have it next year, right? Thank you.
I, my first, excellent presentation, but my first impression was, how is it going to happen? I mean, everybody already works so hard, and as you've said, you know, budgets, et cetera, make growth difficult, the restrictions that we have. So I'm, I am, and I was very happy to see a little bit more fleshing out of the pathways or additions with the accounting services sample, because as, as a, as a business person, that's an area that I, you know, I taught finance, it was no mistake, so, you know, yeah. There are areas where you can, you know, besides the ones that we've already established, the metals, et cetera, there are areas where there are real jobs ready to go when they graduate or with additional, you know, advanced education, and it's connecting with those kids early so that they can find it. And so if there is a way that every teacher on their rotation is, is helping them find that path, they'll stay in school, and they will be prepared for those employers that are contacting you. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, how, how y'all are, you know, going to make that work with, you know, all of the restrictions. So I'm building on what's already there, I see that, and I see a lot of great potential, and, and so I'm excited to hear more, but, and I'm glad to see the big group, and as you've mentioned, working together.
Kumbaya.
The kumbaya kind of stuff. That it's, it's very, very nice to see. And there was something you'd mentioned, I can't remember who it was, about a group that would also have student input? Remember which group that was? Was that, yeah. What was that again?
Advisory programs I'd put in.
And, and to have students participate in what that's going to include?
Oh, that's the big drive, and I can't put it out there. We want to make, I've been here since 1998, and school's in front of me. And one reason is because kids don't like hard about school. School's not coming too much anymore. And part of it, I think, is the kids really aren't involved anymore. We're trying to get to do this, get to do this, take this test, take that on my hand, do this and that, and they've got the decisions of what they'd like to do with certain parameters being taken away. This program, we've looked at a couple others, and our thought was, look at the kids, the kids involved. If the kids are the ones approaching these homerooms or these, you know, programs that have their own presentation, their peers are going to pay more attention to them. And I think, like, as, as example, the department would be more involved, knowing that they're going to get to go to all these rooms, you know, involve these clubs, instead of putting out little tables in the courtyard. Clubs now are going to go into the rooms and get more specific, personal presentations, and make it, you know, like the child I talked about, and driving a older kid who would not go out everywhere, maybe go out to some social like that, that's brought to her. I think we incorporate a lot more kids. I think it could be real successful involving kids that way.
Well, and I know, just, you know, having had teens and 20s now, that, that, I'm sure you hear this way more than I did with, with my three kids, is, you know, why do I have to learn this? But, you know, why do I have to learn algebra? And if, if in this process, they can learn why.
Right.
That makes a big difference.
Well, I can look forward to kind of school, not like, like, wait until it's over.
Yeah. And I, I just wanted to apologize for being late. This is one of the presentations I've been looking forward to and anxiously awaiting, and I was a little disappointed that it was on a night that had a conflict, so I tried to get here as soon as I could. I was very happy to have a preview in the packet, so thank you very much.
Good for you, Angela.
I definitely would appreciate, and I do like you taking the board along the path with you.
Sure.
It's very important.
So at this time, the Pedaluma staff and administration will continue to work together. The staff has coalesced around C3 and have really come together with a great plan to drive student achievement. So I would just like to acknowledge the fact that we have our two interim principals in the back here. David, David did a great job of working with the... in the back here. David, Dave did a great job of working with the team and helping them bring everything together in the presentation tonight. And Ben Holly, the other assistant principal is here as well. So as you can see, it's a staff that has come together and is working for its best for students. And at this time, I'm using C3 and working with the administration to, to build the master schedule and move the school forward as, as presented. Look forward to the outcome.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate you coming.
Yeah, really appreciate it. And I will take a very brief recess. You're welcome to stay for the interim budget discussion.
I'm very excited.
Because of the length of various things, I would like to have a motion to move item six under administration and human resources, resources up to now.
Someone say it.
Because we have a person who we'd like to
Go home.
Share her information and rather than have to sit through all the other stuff. Yes? Steve?
Yes. So this evening we have the consultant hired by Senator McKinley, Office of Education Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Steve Harrington, Catherine Dixon Schorzbach to present and to lead the discussion relative to the consolidation. And she's the educational consultant. Remember we talked about the fact that there's two components. Make sure it's educationally viable and advantageous to students and make sure it's financially viable and education to a future district. And so at this time, I would just like to turn it over to Catherine to begin and lead the discussion. And then after, she has a PowerPoint presentation. Do you have questions as you present?
Sure. Is there a?
Clicker's right there.
At the computer right there.
Read the clicker.
I think we have this very official name.
Really, it's scale.
I appreciate getting to hear the last presentation. It was so well done and really impressive and seeing where students are going in terms of high school. So that was exciting to take a collaboration and everybody presenting together across departments. So I was happy to go after that. So just to get to that, that. So what I wanted to do is just kind of get this started a little bit and let you know where we are in looking at this and then to get your input on any additional information or questions which you would like to have addressed. And as Steve described, I'm working on the educational and demographics components and there will be another firm person working on the financial and the personnel. And so I'll let you know kind of where we are on that as well. So just, I'm not gonna be too long, but just to give you a little bit of background. So I think we are ready for slide number two. Okay, so as far as the role of the study, this is a preliminary study to provide you the background information that she would use for making decisions. This is not part of a formal county committee process with a timeline. So this is informative for you. So as described, two parts, educational programming demographics, which is what I'm here to address, and then financial, including the staffing and all those sort of logistical legal issues related to that. So what I'm hoping for is just some of your input before I get started looking at the educational programming demographics to make sure that you have an opportunity to reflect what you would like to have addressed. So we're ready for the next one. So the, the expectations that we would use the study to determine whether to request to have a county committee and school district reorganization, begin a formal reorganization process. Old Adobe would also be looking at that. So there are three ways that you have it go forward to the county committee, which at that point it's up to the committee and they run the process. So this is a process where the district has much more input. So it's kind of within your control at this point, when as opposed to the county committee, it's within their control. So there's three ways that it gets there. If process is initiated, if both boards request it, if there's a petition by voters and if there's some fine points, it would be either 10 or 25%, or if a governing body such as the city council or board of supervisors was to request it. So three ways it would go to the county committee. So I think that's important just to have that understanding where the preliminary, but to go anywhere, it has to go to the county committee. Yeah.
First, first question. So Pelham City Schools has some city residents, some county residents, and even have rent community. What governing body could this request out to? All?
If one of them makes it, so that, that, if a lot of these are, it's like what, what is precedent as far as how things are determined? So it would be one of those things probably would be going to the CDE to say which of these bodies might be able to do that. My understanding was Old Adobe is within the city of Petaluma also.
Yes, but they also have some county.
They have some county also. So I think that very quickly on a number of these, you get into sort of the technical, what's the precedent as far as doing that. But that is an avenue for getting this done. Or if voters were to say, you know, let's start a petition because this is something that we're in favor of.
So any of those could make a request.
Yeah, all three. So you have three avenues.
But, but one of them, three?
No, no, one of the three.
But just the county committee itself, and it only goes to that committee?
Yeah, so county committee, yes. It has to, something has to happen to get it there and then basically they are under timelines and I'll get into that. Okay, my question. Thank you very much. Okay, so as far as timelines and stats, there, since this is a preliminary study, there's no statutory timeline. So I'll share with you what those timelines are of the county committee. But just to know that this process takes a while. So if a, if there was a request from the county committee, it's still two to three years before this would be through. And so I'll have another slide to give you just a little bit of background. So this is just a tiny, give you a sense of that. So that's when you have a petition for reorganization or, you know, one of those processes to get there. So you have the signatures, you have the petition verified. So you have all of these which are statutory timelines. There is the, the state board of education conducts a hearing. That depends if the districts agree and the county superintendent says, yes, we have district agreement, you can eliminate that step. But you are looking at a November election with effectiveness July 1st for the, the next school year. So just, you know, to know in this process, this is something that's gonna take a while. So, you know, you can go ahead with other decisions while this is ongoing. We'll be here for a while. So then just to back up a little, just as far as what the process is. So the first is there's the petition for the transfer of territory. So it can be dissolving districts, grading districts. So basically that change between the two districts initiated by the 25% of property owners or majority board members in affected districts and that for the government agency. And then preunification initiated and signed by 10% qualified voters or a resolution. So this is kind of the first step is it's going to the county committee. So the next step then is on the next slide would be the approval by the county superintendent. So he looks at the petition, determines if it's sufficient, and then he sends it to the county committee and the state board of education. So then you have the county committee convening. They're established and active and basically take action when called upon to do so. So they hold a public hearing. Basically they notice to the local agency formation commission and they do studies. So the way we're doing our study, they would have that information already because there would be a preliminary study and we would be aligning with that. They might find that they have additional information that they'd want to be looking at. And they, well, they basically, so they do the studies and then they make a recommendation to the state board of education. And it's at that point, you can sometimes circumvent the state board of education if there's agreement with the county superintendent of districts. So the next step is the state board of education who views the petition if need be. And then the final is if the county superintendent calls for an election. And the county committee has the input into what goes into that election, what the language is, and they address issues like what the board composition would be, et cetera. And so they're laying a lot out. So they, once they start, they have a lot of authority in this process. So that's the five-step process. And then, so as far as the study content, we, there is a, you know, a established set of information that you have to provide. We're going to align with that. There was a letter which went from Mary from you and then the board president for Old Adobe, and that laid out some additional information that you would like to have. And I've got that here in writing if I can help with that. And then we can also include additional information if there's information that you think would be helpful. You know, from Steve Harrington's perspective, that he said the educational piece is important. And often when you have a firm do the study, it's primarily financial and, you know, staff movements and logistics. And so that's why he said, you know, we really want to look at the educational program. And that's why we have this component. So it would be additional information. And then the next, so as far as the status, so what happened, April 2001 is when the board presidents from the two districts signed the letter and sent it requesting the study. Last summer in August, County Office of Education solicited bids for consultants. That I, as the educational demographic consultant, met with the school superintendents in September. And as part of that, when I met with the superintendent for Old Adobe, she'd been on the job for 18 days. So there was a lot going on and so they, they were, they're kind of been looking at what, understanding this transition and new superintendent. And so that's why it's been a little slow between that time. So the next slide, that recently, Old Adobe sent a letter to county superintendent. So they've been looking at this and, and they are saying they want to further define the parameters, the purpose, the scope and methodology of the study. So they are saying, okay, we, we want to take a look at this again and understand more of what's going on with this. They want to have input on who will conduct the study and they want to consider if there are other alternatives, additional districts to involve, et cetera, in the study. So he has that letter. He is working on a response. Hasn't gone out yet. I talked to the Old Adobe superintendent yesterday, so that she hadn't received it, but I was talking to Steve earlier this week about that response. And so what he is doing is he'll respond to that and then also wants to host a meeting with board president and superintendent to talk about what, you know, what these issues are, what, what they're looking at in terms of the scope and then what some next steps would be. So that's, I think, my last slide is, oh, I don't know, one more, that'll be the, very close. So what I have is that meeting will be, take place. That will be then addressing the financial and the personnel side of this also. And so at this point, to want to, you know, get moving with the educational and demographic side to see if there's additional information that you would like, that would be helpful. So as far as what we have right now with the educational, be it from what's in ENCODE or what was requested in addition by the districts, was to look at student achievement. So we would look across districts and look at student achievement and similarities, differences, description of the programs offered. So what are you offering, what are they offering in terms of opportunities in the instructional program at the elementary level? The continuity of programs, particularly, that's what was helpful for me to see where students are going in your district.
Right.
So that was, you know, helpful to say it's like, okay, this is where we're going. You need to start that at the elementary. So to look at those kinds of things as far as continuity, the status of curriculum articulation, alignment, what efforts are there to align now at the elementary with the middle schools? So that there would be, you know, you would have a statement of findings as far as what is existing right now in both districts and then also community resources that are supporting the schools. So there's an understanding that you have that change, you want to still have that community support, which is going with that school community. So that, that's what I have for educational in terms of demographic, looking at the community identity of schools. So where are they? Who's their parent community? If there's things that are, you know, are special to them and that who they are, if that's something you would want to detract from. And then the enrollment and subgroups. So we're looking at who those student populations are by schools. This is an important one for the state and just looking at that preliminarily, they're pretty similar. I mean, it's, I don't see, that's not an issue. If you had very different demographics, the state can have concerns, but we're not seeing that. So is there additional information, things that you'd like to know about the schools, a lot to know about your schools, Old Adobe schools?
Well, I, I feel like, you know, our district, each of our schools has a unique community identity. And so given that, and they really are very unique. So I think it's important in, in making sure the Old Adobe district understands that ours aren't all the same because I know that they have their own unique
Right.
cultures at each of their schools as well, so that they could see that, that our district's a little larger, but still has that unique identity at each side. I know that for me, one of, I know that you're on the educational side, the program side, but one of the differences programmatically has to do with funding and the community resources supporting educational program category. I know that you probably are aware that we have parcel taxes that support several different programs that are really important to our community.
Yes.
And so that is an important issue for us. And knowing, knowing that the greater Petaluma area tends to have the same sort of support for those programs is good, but I know that Old Adobe might, it does not have the same kind in the elementary. But they are a high school district. They're in our high school district and supported our high school programs. So we know that element's there. That makes any sense.
So what is existing? So I think as far as looking at the whole picture and looking at the findings and the personnel, you have sort of this base, what exists educationally? What are we able to offer?
Right.
And then looking at that across schools.
Across the districts.
Because, I mean, that's, yeah, that would be the point is that we can offer something more educationally.
Correct.
That that would be that interest. And that's why, you know, you take that little extra time.
And I know that even though each of our schools has unique identities, we are able to offer the same rich programs at each of the sites.
Okay.
So that with the exception, I mean, that we have two sites that are slightly, well, different, the McKinley and McDowell because of the brain separation. You have a K3 and a 46. So that is slightly different, but they have a shared community between them.
Okay, yes, yes. But so it's looking at the program and so just understanding so that you would have that information to say this is the program we have, this is the program they have.
Right. And, and we are, you know, constantly are trying to improve our programs, but are very happy with what's been developed, you know.
And I think also looking at what's the planning and articulation for you and middle schools.
Well, that's it.
Because you both be then. And so what is there?
Right.
And so that's a lot of just, you know, reporting to you on what actually exists.
And, and yeah, what are our requirements for seventh grade? So that we can see that both districts, you know, are feeding and having students ready for those requirements in seventh grade. Yeah, would be important.
Well, and I think then that would be looking at some, at the seventh grade as far as, you know, what do we know about how students are doing?
Do we have any data that could show how the Adobe district's seventh grade or a school in New York?
If you have it in Ares, if you're combing it, then
Emily, you want to weigh in on that question?
We can pull the feeder school data. And we can look at any of the assessments that we currently offer.
Okay, Emily, I'm jotting down your name.
I'm the principal of Coward.
Okay, wonderful.
So the front line, Old Adobe, all the Old Adobe students feeding at Ares, seventh grade program.
Maybe something parents both have to do that today.
What percentage is that just out of curiosity, ballpark?
Little or half.
Little or half.
So anything on the demographic side?
Well, one of the demographic issues, you know, again, they, they look at us as being the big district. In reality, we have small schools. You know, they have in four schools slightly fewer students than we have in six schools. You know, they have, in four schools, slightly fewer students than we have in six schools.
Do we even know the average student population at each of their sites?
Since they changed to four schools, they're, they're well over 400 students, they're not well over, they're over 400 students per, and we have a few schools that have 400, but we also have schools as small as 200 students in our, in the makeup.
What is our, our elementary population again?
Our elementary population's about 20, 100 students in the six, six schools.
Okay, and theirs is?
And they have approximately 1,800 students in four schools.
Okay, so it's very close. A one school difference. Okay, anything else I may have?
Hey, I've got one more slide for my flipper.
Okay, so basically, just kind of quoting that, so the financial analysis component is still pending because county superintendent is saying, okay, if you have some recommendations or who you'd like to have address this, you know, would like to know who those are. And then the second is that you will be receiving a letter soon inviting superintendent and board member to come to a meeting to.
Also, it would be a joint with the other superintendent?
It may be, or, yeah, I'm not sure what that, that may be. But that would be then coming up to look at sort of those next steps and the financial information and the scope issues.
Okay. So. And do you have what you need to proceed to do?
I think I do, yes. I would, you know, like it to be a little faster there in Old Adobe, but I would like to start in the educational piece.
Is that meeting usually held at a five-star restaurant?
I believe it's this really nice building that's kind of got some oak trees out there. All right, well, thank you, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go back to the regular agenda and we'll go to item five, certification of the first interim report. Mitch Hoffman, chief business official, will give a presentation regarding a positive certification that the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Detroit High School districts will be able to meet their financial obligations by year end.
Yeah, that's true. Well, given how many presentations we've had this evening, we decided to keep this extremely short. So there's just a few slides, basically, going to give you an update, quick update on ADA since we just did our C-beds analysis. Basically, our enrollment and ADA for elementary in the current year is flat. Just really, we're not going based on prior year ADA at all, but it's just flat for the current year. And, and next year, we're expecting to see a very slight decrease of two. And then in 13, 14, go up by eight. So elementary's pretty flat, which is what we, in the long haul, expected. Cherry Valley has gone up by 21 and they were at 372, 371 last year. And they were able to keep their portables from the modernization project and so they were able to grow. So now they're at 392 and they've got enrollment of about 405 students right now. So we see them staying relatively flat. The current year for the high school, we're still using prior year ADA. We expect our actual ADA in this year to be about 46, 41 by P2. And then for next year, we're not going to use that ADA as we had in the past where we're using prior year. We expect to grow for 12, 13 and actually use real ADA in 12, 13 for the first time in quite a number of years. And we're projecting it to be about just over 4,700 and then growing another 88 students in 13, 14. So we, we, just because of changes, I mean, even though we're lower, we're comparing 10, 11 ADA to 12, 13 and we still show a net decrease of 38, but we're using actual for change. So, so looking at our end balance trends, right now, these trends include future COLAs, which are heavily in, in the balance. We don't know whether or not that's going to happen or not. Even with future COLAs at this time, we're projecting a slight appropriated deficit in 13, 14 of just under, you know, just over 400,000. But in actuality, I do need to do some further analysis with the multi-year projections. I need to ensure that, you know, I don't have one-time expenditures, both in like one-time carryovers, which I believe are in there. So that number is actually, is, is not really, it, it will be higher, to the positive.
To the positive, yes.
To the positive, as long as COLAs are funded.
Right.
So. I, I know, there's, there's, and, and then, let's see, our latest information that will, I'll need to update this financial information because this just came out today. The Department of Finance has released their estimates for the 11, 12 revenues. They're estimating that it will be short by $2.2 billion. And that's, and compared to legislative analysts who a couple of weeks ago projected that it was going to be short by the 3.7, which would basically implement the full trigger on K12, this has a very, it's, it's still an impact and any impact at this point is still huge. So with this, what's come out on the Department of Finance is that we'll take the hit for half of our regular home-to-school transportation and our special ed transportation of over $434,000. They'll eliminate that from our student funding for the remainder of this year. And then, what's curious is that that component alone totals $248 million. Now, our understanding of AD114 is anything over $2 billion, K12 would be hit with. So we're, I'm not really clear how we take an additional hit on the revenue limit when the transportation cut exceeds that .2 billion.
Yeah, right.
So I have an email out to see if I can get an answer to that technicality. But right now, based on what the Department of Finance has put out there, we're expecting to see a decrease in our revenue limit of somewhere around $10 per student. That equates to about $72,000. The other thing that's come out, and, you know, this is all speculation at this point, but the governor is hinting that these cuts, instead of being one-time in nature, which is what AD114 was promised, that these are one-time cuts and that they would be restored in future years, may not happen, which, based on how things have gone, we sort of thought that might be the case. And that this information is definitely not incorporated into what you can, should be working on. So, that's it in the next.
When you put the total of the revenue limit cut on transportation, it's over $400,000. $400 million at the state. By this number, it appears that we should only be getting cut 205 million dollars. So we're not asking just questions. How, we were supposed to get 205, that they cut more than that in transportation plus the make-up revenue limit cut is really the question that we need to answer. And all the information, limited information we saw this afternoon, nobody addressed that issue.
Lance, did you say that 434,000, half of that was special ed and half of it's home to school? Is that what I'm supposed to be saying?
Approximately, yes.
Doesn't it kind of feel like they're trying to tell us to get out of home-to-school transportation? I mean, every time they cut something, they underfund it and they cut it.
They're not, they're not funding home-to-school transportation. For about 40% right now, maybe a little less than that in regards to their, their funding. So, yeah, they're not supporting home-to-school transportation.
40% underfunded or 60% underfunded?
Or 60% underfunded, they're only spending about 40%.
Prior to that.
And now they're cutting half of that. So they're going to be funding about 20% of our home-to-school transportation.
Right. And then what portion is paid by?
Very little. One thing that's happened in recent years is the, we used to receive about $100,000 in parent fees. We increased the amount, but now we're receiving probably closer to $20,000 in parent fees. It's almost off-prey reduced. Now, when we expanded, expanded the walking distance to three miles, a lot of the people who paid were inside that three-mile radius and no longer are transported, no longer transported, so they're no longer paying the fees.
What about the, you mentioned special ed component of that transportation? Does the, do the feds weigh in and pay for any of that?
No, not that I'm.
And they pay what, 17% of?
Of their 40%.
Of their 40% commitment?
Right, yeah.
But they, they make no allowance for, for transportation?
No.
Right.
And that's a mandated program.
No, it's not mandated, it's, it's at the pleasure of the board. Special education transportation is required in the rest of the IUPs of students. So you have no, no option.
It, it will be interesting because they're actually required under maintenance of effort to provide funds and keep, you know, the funding level for special education. And this is a component of that.
No, I don't think they take into consideration transportation.
You think that's excluded?
I believe the maintenance of effort is only programmed.
I thought it was looking, everything that's coded to a 5,000 goal, which is special ed related, gets pulled into that and this program is, does have that. So, I don't know, it'll be interesting.
Do we have an idea of how many special ed students use the home-to-school transportation?
That's what we'll be looking into as well. Because there are a number of special education students who will get on the big yellow bus and if we eliminate the big yellow bus, we'll be driving a little yellow bus out to pick up those students.
A lot of that are students who are going to county programs, non-public schools. So, yeah, I have a student that's coming out of North County, that's a lot. So, yeah, we have a lot of our, our in-district students who are taking gen ed transportation a lot. You know, but the more severe ones, we end up with, you know, transportation. So also, we, we bus to around Catari-Monopark area and then we contract with first student for anything beyond that for our county and non-public schools.
Do we have any latitude to economize with other school districts or?
We provide, the transportation, we're all in South County. And Sedoma Valley, we provide some of the transportation for them as well. So we have tried to use some economies by their share. And then we charge them their share of the transportation.
And how many home-to-school, schools do, do they have?
About.
I don't know off the top of my head. Maybe a couple hundred students? I think it's.
It's down, I mean, it used to be closer to 500 students, but we can reduce the walking distance.
Because the person voting on, I mean, budget is huge.
If you eliminate home-to-school transportation, what happens with the funding is, well, right this year, we've already met our obligation for the current year because of the load that they transport. If you don't spend all of the funds, they pay you in reverse and they still owe you the dollars the next year. But then when you submit the report and indicate that you haven't spent those dollars, the transportation funds go away the following year. And you can't, you know, you can't go back and start transportation back up. Once you give those funds up, they're gone.
It simply just makes me say, you didn't want to just set five minutes, though. It seems like the state is trying to tell us to get out of the business of paying kids home-to-school. I mean, just systemically, well, if you stop, you can't start again.
Right.
Realistically.
Well, think of that as a kind of intuitive maneuver. You're home schooled by a little freshman at school. I don't know where you're going with that.
It's very frustrating.
It is frustrating.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, item G, approval of the minutes of November 8th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll do some paper. Do we have any comments from the public? Activities and correspondence of the board members. Lots of activities at Grant, the Javatown Track grand opening and the Grant Post feed, meeting with CICA president, festival of trees benefit for the Education Foundation that you meet in the Wanda Project. Various athletic events, including announcing at basketball games, attendance at tournaments and volleyball games, as well as site visit to Petaluma Hospital. A busy time and in the next two weeks, lots and lots of winter concerts, et cetera.